Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 18, 2018 Board of Selectments meeting. Alan is not here this evening. He is involved in his day of atonement, so we will take his place and we will ask for a motion for a temporary clerk, please.
So...
For who?
Peter.
Peter, okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Three, are you...
I'll abstain from them.
Okay, so three, zero, one.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have no vote.
All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Ever. President, our Selectment Skyzotti, Selectment Bruce, Chairman Pro Tem, Tropiano, and Clerk Pro Tem, Titlebaum, as well as Town Council and this person, am I right?
What's his name?
His name is...
All right, can we have a pledge of allegiance? Let's see, let's have the moderator do this one. She just stands right up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right. Announcements, Tony?
Nothing, sir.
Mary?
I do have one. The Wareham Department of Natural Resources with the help of the Wareham Department of Information Technology distributed 11,880 fishmeal polymer-based oral rabies vaccines in areas throughout town. They were also able to reach many inland wooded areas in town by utilizing one of their ATVs. The program is funded by the USDA Wildlife Services and coordinated with the Cape Cod Rabies Task Force. They've been participating in distribution for several years. If your dog decides to have a Scooby snack, be advised it's not harmful to them, however, it may cause stomach upset. Please report any exposures to the Department of Natural Resources at 508-291-3100, extension 3113. If you find a bait on the street, use a towel or a glove and throw it back into the woods, please.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Yes, first off, we have the Warehams Got Talent Show. This is, I don't know when it's going to take place, but they have another audition date on Tuesday, September 25th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Don't know why the auditions take place, but anyway, if you go on Facebook, I know there's announcements there, especially on the Wareham What's Going On Facebook page. Oh, here we go, more information. Wareham Free Library, apparently that's where they're doing the auditions. That would be Tuesday, September 25th, 3:00 to 7:00. Adult performers, 18 and older, may audition, any type of talent. That's scary. Musical, comedy, magic, dance, et cetera, prizes will be awarded. The Warehams Got Talent Show will take place on October 19th. More info and ticket sales to follow, so...
All set? All right, I have nothing, so citizens' comments. Anybody here to speak to the board this evening? Come on down, Miss Moderator.
I don't know, is she here as moderator or as Citizen Smith?
No, she's, she's one of, I'd say she's Citizen Smith if she's, maybe not, no?
You didn't win the prize.
Oh, okay.
I get to keep it. I'm here as moderator tonight. Tonight you have on your agenda a discussion on warrant articles, and what I'm going to ask the board going forward, if you could, when we get to the article regarding the appropriation for the school, I think we need to make it very clear to the voters that they're not coming to town meeting to vote yes or no on the building of a school, that we're only going to be having an article that deals with the appropriation of whether or not to borrow the money, and that's contingent on the vote in November. So, I just want to make it very clear to people, because I think people have the impression that they're coming to town meeting to decide whether or not to build a new school. So I think if we can get that message out there, it will help with some of the discussion, and so going forward over the next couple of weeks, if you just could reiterate that so that people do understand, the question of whether or not to build a school is not going to happen at town meeting, that happens in November at the ballot.
Yep.
Right. And actually, what we do is we vote, we vote an exemption, which is to exempt it from two and a half at the ballot. So we really, we vote the money and we vote the exemption, so we don't actually vote to build the school, we're actually voting for two different items. The school happens to be the outcome.
Right.
But it's just the way they do it, so you're right, and we will keep bringing that up, so. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Board comments, anybody got any comments? Tony?
Nope.
Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
Yeah, I've got one anyway. Anybody who's watched the news, has seen what has happened in the Carolinas and Virginia with the flooding, and all these people were trapped in their homes. Many of these people were trapped because they did not heed warnings or even orders to evacuate. Just because a hurricane, that's a category four yesterday, becomes a category one when it makes landfall, doesn't mean that it still isn't going to dump four feet of rain where you are. And so, there's a reason these orders and requests are made, and that's for the public safety. It's not to inconvenience people, it's not to make you go live in a shelter and be dependent on government for a week, it's for your own personal safety. And given where we live, given the vulnerability we have to hurricanes, I would hope that people would have seen what's going on in the news and said to themselves, gee, if I'm told to leave, I better do it, because that's really what you need to do.
Okay, actually, you know, I kept getting, did anybody get alarms on their phone all day today?
Yep.
For all the different stuff, the tornado warnings and the flood warnings and all that. That's kind of neat, isn't it? The way they do that now, it just kind of happens. I don't know, I didn't do anything to make it happen, but it happens. It's kind of a neat thing. Anyway, all right, appointments, reappointments, I believe we don't have any?
Nope.
Okay, so we have a license and permits. We have a request from the Buzzits Bay Coalition for the use of town roads for their annual Buzzits Bay Watershed Ride.
Yeah, this is to be held on Saturday, September 30th, 2018. The cycling will take place throughout the streets of Wareham, so it's not specific, it's everywhere. We're granting them a license to use all the roads, essentially, starting at 12:00 p.m. They appear to have everything in order here in the packet. We appear to have the relevant sign-offs, and I think we're good to go. I move that we approve the application.
Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four, zero, zero.
Yeah, I'm not going to pass this around to sign, because part of it is to go to District Five of Mass DOT, and only the chairman can sign that, and we'll wait for him to sign it next week.
Okay. Next up is the discussion about the warrant articles. Now, I have Alan's, and since he's chair, I think it's only fair, he has given me his recommendations, and I'll read them into the record, although he doesn't count as a vote. I want everybody to understand that it won't be a vote, so we will need us to come up with the votes to make this work. The article on the, your committee...
What?
The committee for, yeah, we're going to hold off on that one altogether, because we, you two are going to abstain, so there's only two of us. I prefer there was three of us here at least to make the vote, okay?
Yep.
So we'll hold off on that. So we'll start with the first one, which I have, and it's the approval and fund for fall capital plan for FY19. Now, Alan says, "I will vote to recommend with my concerns what the TA actually brings forward. There's three items from water pollution control that were not on the town capital plan when we closed the warrant. The sewer commissioners seem not to have full support of these items when I attached, when I attended their meeting on 8:30 18." So, he's voting recommending, recommending it, but he does have some concerns about what the final numbers or the final outcome will be.
Yeah, I would respectfully request the board hold off on a vote on this until we've got the plan coming forward.
All right, then we'll hold off on one. So that'll have to be voted the night of town meeting. Transfer of free cash, we don't have that yet, so we can...
We don't, but if you want to go over the plan real quick, basically, it would be...
Sure.
For, A, the stabilization fund, we currently have $3,209,317 and some change in there. With our budget, and really it's including the operating budget, plus the assessments, plus the upper Cape Cod tax assessment, you know, we're $64 million plus. The policy would have us at $3,207,000, a little bit of money there. So, I'd recommend that we add $150,000 to that, no matter what, every year. That plus the return on that, the account we have it in currently yields 2.25%. That would keep us, you know, right around putting about 225,000 in it annually, which would keep up with our, you know, having 5% of the total budget.
Okay.
Number two is OPEB. I'd recommend 300,000 and that we keep that as the minimum as a policy going forward. We currently have, and this is just ironic, $700,068 in that account. We've been doing pretty well, the returns on that little over 10% return last year. It's not, that's a mixture of equities and fixed funds, and we're with the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund. So if we add the 300,000, they'll bring us right over $1 million. It's, we're starting to tackle the liability, which is really nice.
All right, but we'll wait until we get the final numbers on the amount. The other thing is, is, yeah, the OPEB thing, we're one of the few communities, I want everybody to realize that it's actually working on this. There's a lot of communities not working on it at all, but we have a long way to go. There's a lot of unfunded liability that needs to be dealt with, but we're working on it. Unpaid bills, do you have anything for that yet?
No, we don't at this time.
We're going to cash that in for right now. All right, let me move up to the next one, would be transfer of the McKinley-Vento funds, transportation revolving.
Do we have the number on that yet, Kim? It's routinely between 30,000 or 40,000, I think, is the reimbursement we get, so...
The number's not here.
It's just a transfer of what we receive from the state into the fund, so I think we can safely vote this, because we're not going to do anything else with it.
Alan says, "I would vote to recommend it. I want to make sure these monies are only used to cover the cost of related to McKinley-Vento related expenses," which of course it is, because it's transportation.
Yeah, because if they don't do that, they go to jail, so I don't think they want to do that.
Yeah, so I guess we can, we can make sure that that happens.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll take a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four, zero, zero. The next one is the Deacon School. Now...
The Mine at Forest School that...
This is the Deacon School at Mine at Forest, right.
I refuse to say that.
For your request.
It's actually right on here now, right? It's the Deacon School at Mine at Forest, that's what we decided. Did you change that?
Nope.
We took a vote one night to make it the Deacon School at Mine at Forest.
Yes.
And we did that when Cindy, Cindy came in with a recommendation because her family, the Deacon's family, and the story of the Deacon's family, we voted that night. Now that hasn't been changed, has it? No. Okay, so that's what it is.
Good.
All right, so that's what it says here, too.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, so now, this is to vote for the article to go forward at town meeting to allow the borrowing of the dollars for the school. That's all this is for. You're not going there and saying, "Yeah, I want to build a school." You're not. You're going to say, "It's okay with me if you borrow the money to build the school." That's what you're saying.
And actually, the ultimate approval should have passed town meeting comes on November 6th, when everybody in town who's registered to vote gets to weigh in on it.
Exactly.
So, it's a two-step process, it requires two affirmative votes.
That's when you get the right to exclude this from Proposition 2.5, and then the school can be built, okay? So I hope everybody understands that. We'll try to keep that up, because Madam Moderator is right, people have to understand what they're doing. All right, so can I have a motion, please?
Motion to recommend Article 5.
Second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, four, zero, zero. All right, next up is harbor service permit receipts reserved for appropriation account. It says the sum of $146,330...
Have the harbor master here if we want to ask him questions.
Well, I, this is a pretty standard transfer, we do all the time, I don't think we really need anything from them. To be transferred into the maintenance improvement fund, this is something we do all the time. I mean, I don't think...
Well, there is one question, because we also have the petition article.
Do you have a question that you want to ask?
Gary, does it include dredging?
Could you come down, they want to ask a question?
Did you have the copies? It's on page two. It is requesting funding for getting the ball rolling for surveys and checking out everything that, outside the scope of the federal dredge, which is a completely different creature.
Okay. All right, so Alan says, "I'll vote to recommend included in this program was for dredge study, which uses a consultant with a strong track record."
Yes.
Okay, so that's been included in the article.
Good. Maybe at town meeting, we could refer to this as the Jepson Proviso.
Okay. I think they're both doing the same thing, so whatever works.
Okay. All right, so is, anybody have, have any questions?
That's it.
Nope?
Move to recommend.
Okay, motion to recommend by Peter.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's four, zero, zero, unanimous. Good job. Transfer from PEG Access RRFA account to fund WCTV. This is because of the change in the law.
Yep.
We have to now sort of appropriate their money out. It kind of went through before.
Right, before, what happened was, just so people understand, under the town's contracts with both Comcast and Verizon, they have to give us X percent, depending on what the contract calls for, to the town. The town gets to keep half a percent, and the cable company would get the rest, so that's basically, the cable companies, every quarter or every half-year, whichever it was, would send us a big fat check, and we would just pass it through to the Wareham Community Television operation. Unfortunately, the state changed that, now we had to set up a revolving fund, which is in existence. So now what has to happen is the money comes to the town, it gets deposited into the revolving fund, and then every six months, or as it happens, every spring and fall town meeting, we're going to have to appropriate out to the cable companies, to the town cable company, rather, the WCTV. It's a bit of an inconvenience for them, because I believe before, they used to get checks from us quarterly, now they're going to get checks from us twice a year, so. But it was a move by the government to make it so that the town actually collected the money and then dispersed it, and everything happens with the vote of the legislature. So it's something that happened under the Municipal Modernization Act, and it's something we had to do.
Okay, so Alan says he will, he will vote to recommend. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Tony. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's four, zero, zero. All right, this next one is return unused funds from completed project. Let's see if the town will vote to transfer to the community preservation, undesigned, designated fund account $35,000 from a grant received from the West Wareham Affordable Housing and Open Space Fall 2016 Town Meeting. Article number 15, and to transfer to the community preservation, historical preservation reserve account $68.27 from the Methodist Meeting House Fall 14, Article 24. I ought to do anything relevant there, too. All right, is there any questions?
No.
I have a motion, please.
Motion to recommend.
Okay, motion to recommend by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. This is, the next one is the house numbering bylaw. Now, this was put together, you're all welcome to read through it. It's going to require everybody in town now to have three-inch height letters, numbers, somewhere in the vicinity of their front door, and it has some teeth in order to be, for us to also be able to enforce it, because, you know, this is, it seems kind of crazy that we have to do this to save people's lives, but it's just something you got to do nowadays. I mean, we've told them over and over again. Go ahead, Tony.
There are some houses that their front door doesn't face the street.
That, yes, but it's, it's, if the house doesn't, the house has to face, the front door of the house should always be facing the street, I don't know how many houses are like that.
Well, it's going to be, yeah, it's going to be circumstance-dependent. For example, if I put a number on my door, you would never see it, because the dog wouldn't let you get to the door, so it's on the garage instead.
And it says, it says in here, in a visible location...
Right.
Somewhere near the front door, so...
And I think, I think Section D helps you out with that one, too.
So, it, yeah, I mean, it could be some issues, but that'll all get worked out, I'm sure.
All right.
All right, so, any motions, please?
Move to recommend.
Okay, second.
Move to recommend by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. In both cases, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, but Alan has recommended both.
Yep.
So now we go to Article 10, and it says that he will recommend with administration's explained plan for maintenance and all user fees. Okay, this is the Lilian Gregman ban shell. Now, I understand it's $333,000 to replace it, and they're going to replace it in its entirety, so, and that's coming from CPC, obviously. Any questions?
So they're going to knock it down and replace it?
Replace it.
Rebuild, yep.
And rebuild it.
Any other?
And hopefully not fry musicians anymore.
And this, this amount of money is to do both? Knock it down and replace it?
Yes.
Yeah, and just so you know, since it is a town structure, we are working with them on some of the demolition and things, which, you know, absorbing some of our crew and equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, keep the question.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next is the Tremont remediation. This is for $1,430,000. This is for the cleanup of the property. Now, we know we had some contamination out there, there were some problems. I was the one who was probably the more concerned than anybody else about this, that it could have cost us, you know, 30, 40 million dollars to clean up. Unfortunately, when we bought the property, we made a big mistake, we did a, they did a drive-by, 21E, they didn't actually do any borings or anything, and we were all very concerned, and for years, this has been sort of a bad situation. Well, this is going to fix it once and for all, and we're going to be able to go forward and use this property and get something done out there, so I'm all in favor of it. And Alan says that he will also recommend it, so...
Yep.
And this has had test results, so they have done some borings and things of that nature, so this is terrific.
Yep, move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Tony. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
And on this one, there will be a presentation at town meeting explaining what's going on here, so people, this is a big-ticket item, people need to be able to visualize where the problems are and what's going to be done to resolve them. You can't just ask for 1.43 million and say, "Hey, we know what we're doing," that's, that's not good governance.
All right, the next one's the community preservation fund reserve adjustment. It's Article 12, to see if the town will vote to reserve for future appropriation from community preservation, undesigned funds, the following amount of $11,400 to open space reserve, and $11,400 to affordable housing reserve, or act anywhere to do anything, and so on. And this is a standard housekeeping item, and Alan recommends to vote positive, so...
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, move to recommend by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
We're going to skip 13.
We are going to skip 13, yeah. That's your...
The WRA article, yeah.
Yeah. Amend zoning bylaws, okay, so...
Why don't we call it the town planner, because he's here.
Yeah, he can come up and give us some quickies on this stuff if he wants. You want to come up and give us a little quickie on this? This is Article 14, amend zoning bylaws, Article 5 supplemental regulations, amend zoning bylaws, density and dimension regulations, amend zoning bylaws for the sign regulation, and what's the last one? I think there's one more, right?
No, that was it.
Oh, that's it, okay.
That's it.
All right, that's enough.
There's plenty for this town meeting.
All right.
These were at the request of the building commissioner, and they are to allow better enforcement and ease of permitting under the different sections of the bylaw.
Anybody have any questions while he's here?
Nope.
All right, could I have a motion to, why don't you do them all, Peter? 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, move to recommend Articles 14, 15, and 16.
Second.
I hear a motion to approve by Peter, seconded by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four, zero, zero.
All right, can I have a...
By the way, Alan recommended all of them, I just want everybody to know.
Could I add that we're having a public hearing on the articles this coming Monday at the planning board hearing meeting?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, public hearing, if anybody's interested, go to the public hearing and you can...
Planning board meeting on Monday.
Article 17, request for transfer of funds, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the water pollution control facility capital fund into the water pollution control facilities grant account for the purposes to fund the town's portion of the Water Warriors Grant, or to take any action there, too.
Yeah, well...
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I've spoke, this was from the sewer commissioners.
We've got one here.
I've spoken to two of them, I don't think there's, I don't think they're clear yet on whether they'd like to move forward. This is roughly an $82,000 grant received from the, from SEC.
Love.
Yeah, however, this project could cost about $600,000 as experimental technology.
Okay, so Alan says, "I will not recommend." Mixed responses from sewer commissioners on this could require town to spend up to $600,000.
Why don't we just hold off on this?
I agree, I think we should not recommend the article, that's my opinion.
Do you want a straight-up motion right now to not recommend?
Yep, I do.
Okay, move to not recommend.
Okay, not, Article not to recommend by Peter, seconded by Mary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's four, zero, zero.
Okay, just for the office's understanding, when we vote to recommend, I'm doing it as an affirmative, four, zero, zero vote. If we vote not to recommend, as in just the case here, I put down zero, four, zero, so that they're clear on what it is.
All right, the next one is, I need a motion to pass over. The residents are going to be withdrawing this petition, as I understand it.
I don't think there's any action required here.
We don't actually, that's right, it's a petition article.
Yeah.
So we don't have to do anything. But it is going to be, it is probably going to be passed over, just for the sake of everybody out there. Next is securing services for dredging consultant.
We have a petitioner here.
We do have the petitioner, why don't you come down and give us your story?
That could take a while. Could you talk to the article, please?
I prepared a few documents and emails, so...
All right, well, why don't you go ahead and give us your, give us your...
Don Jepson, I appeared before...
Speak up to the mic, please, so that we can hear you.
Yeah, I appeared before the Finance Committee last Wednesday night, and I won't read everything Yeah, I appeared before the finance committee last Wednesday night, and I won't read everything that I said, but I referred to a document which Larry Bears, who was a 30-year ship's captain and was a member with the Marine Resources Commission, and he made some very good points. He talked about dredging in 2014, and at that time, it was not considered a priority, but he had just joined the Marine Resources Commission, but he brought, you know, as I said, 30 years of experience as a ship's captain to the Marine Resources Commission. And basically, what he said was that we, we need to rally everybody in order to try to get dredging, because it is an economic stimulus, and, and if you look at what's going on in downtown Village, it's kind of in a, a negative situation. It's a downward spiral, in my view. But what, what he, the key piece that he said is that the idea is to bring up front and informative to the taxpayers and declude all interests. Experience shows that public information and exposure tends to generate favorable results rather than just placed on the back burner. And this is no criticism of Gary or Alan, who has modified tonight what is in Gary's dredging survey. But I think the publicity is a very important part, and I think this is like a first step to try to get the townspeople behind it, and that's a very important part of that. The other thing is, and I'm not trying to nitpick on Gary, because I have all the respect in the world for him. He's a hard-working guy, and he's, he has a can-do attitude, and unfortunately, he's had so many things to do that his, a lot of his efforts are well-intended, but he just can't deliver on all the things he's been asked to do. But when he refers to it as being a dredging survey, that came up at the, at the finance committee, and I said, it's, it's not really a survey. And if you read what was in the article, it's basically a dredging plan, which is one of the things that is a requirement for the dredging pilot, navigation pilot dredging program, which we did not apply to this summer, which was for $4 million. The second thing is there no mention of hiring a consultant, but Alan, I think, pretty much corrected that, and that wording now will say a qualified consultant. That, that's what he inserted into what Gary was proposing as an article, correct?
It says that, and he mentioned it just now.
And third, there is no specifics as to the money going to a contract to develop a dredging plan. When I went before the finance committee, one of the points that was made was that if it's going to be a contract, if it's, since this is for an estimated figure, which I actually took it up a little bit, what I was told is that you have to pin that down so that it says the money is going to go for a contract, because when that goes out to bid, if it comes in to be less, then the money has to go back to the sources that it's coming from. And what makes the major difference between what is in my article and what is in Gary's, included in Gary's Article 6, is that I have now modified the motion after struggling with that and unfortunately finding out that an individual that has a petition is not given a lot of help in terms of modifying that motion.
That's true.
Because of ethics, and I'm not being critical of anybody. I'm just a learning experience for me. So what I have put in as a modified motion is that the, that the money would come from the use of a Seaport Economic Council grant. And the reason I put that forward is because I need to put something in there. And if we go for a Seaport Economic Council grant, then you'll either get either partial reimbursement, or you will get a total reimbursement for the $10,000. And that's the angle which I see is the biggest difference between what I'm saying and what Gary is saying here, where all of the proceeds are going to come from the receipts that we get for moorings and the like. So that's the biggest, and that's why I think it's different. So there's the publicity, the fact that it's a dredging plan, I'll skip over the mention of hiring consultant, because that's going in there. There's no specifics as to the money is going to a contract, and the hiring of a consultant, and there's no use of Seaport Economic Council grant, which is a, which is a way of trying to give the taxpayers some relief and a way to try to get that money back. Speaking of which, in the, back last August, I sent an email to the selectmen and basically said that, and I, and I didn't know that, because there wasn't a lot of transparency, that Derek has already been pursuing a Seaport Economic Council grant, but I put down that Swansea had gotten a million dollars for doing this, for rehabilitation of all their beaches, and putting up lifeguards, and buildings, and everything else. And the report that came back to me basically said that, I think we have too many people getting involved. Well, I didn't know what was going on. If I'd known that, I would have said, well, this is what they're doing. We did not apply this summer, because we're not shovel-ready for dredging under the Navigation Dredging Pilot Program. Separately, I heard from Alan Slaven that there was no point in doing it, because the Big Four would get it. And the Big Four, as he detailed it previously, was Boston, New Bedford, Fall River, and Gloucester. Well, on August 30th, they announced that Barnstable got a million dollars, okay? That Swansea got $782,000. And I think we really need to do collectively, together, a better job of going out and trying to get these grants. There was $4 million, there was a deadline of a week and a half. Gary said he would pursue it next year, because we weren't shovel-ready. But if you're not ready, it's very competitive, and that's what Larry and everybody has said all along. I can't stress hard enough, or I can't stress enough that I think it's in the best interest of the town to get a qualified consultant, which is what Alan is saying, and to move these things forward, because it's no criticism of Gary or anybody else here. The thing is, other people are getting these things done, whether it be Barnstable, or whether it be Plymouth, or whether it be Sandwich, or it be Wellfleet. We have more coastline than anybody else. And as Sandy Slaven said, according to Zone, Coastal Zone Management, we have 87.3 miles, not 54 miles, but I won't get into that. So anyway, that, that's my reason, it's that I would like to go forward, as this article is a separate article. But I do want to say that I totally support what is in Gary's article, and I think that, you know, that I will stand up at town meeting and say that. So that's my position.
Okay, go ahead, Peter.
One of the things, and I'm not actually, I think I can get away with this, I'm not actually helping you with your article, but at town meeting, if, if there are things in the Harbor Masters article that you would like the wording changed on, you could actually move to amend the article to include some of those things if you wanted. You would want to check with Madam Moderator ahead of time, because she likes to get those suggested amendments in well in advance, so she's got time to research them to the best of her ability and see if they're, whether they're within the scope of the article and allowable, or whether they're outside of the scope of the article. So she likes to get the stuff, what, a week ahead of time is good? Two weeks, ooh, she's being tough, so.
I can give it to her tonight.
Sounds like you gotta, it sounds like, yeah. Yeah, so, so, you know, to the extent that, I don't know if this board is going to vote to recommend your article or not, because we already recommended the Harbor Masters, but to the point of your concerns, you have, you have another avenue for those as well.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make you aware of that.
If those could be integrated, again, my only purpose is to come back to what, to what Larry Bears had said all along. We need to get some publicity to get people behind this.
Yep.
And if it's, and if, and as I read in the town warrant, okay, and this is what was published by the selectmen, and what it says is, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $146,330 from the harbor services permit receipts reserved for appropriations account to be transferred into the Harbor Masters Maintenance and Improvements account to take, or to take any other action. There are, there is no mention of dredging, there is no mention of hiring a consultant.
I think Mr. Jepson's getting confused from the warrant, which is just saying, we're going to take these funds from this account, and then the motion and the explanation that you see in the finance committee handbook are what gives that explanation. If we put that all in the warrant, Don, you would have probably an 80-page document that we're spending a ton of money on printing, posting, and newspaper. So I understand what you're saying, you know, this is your concern. But I will say, a frustrating part is your, it's almost like saying that there's some shenanigans or tomfoolery here, that because that's not, that's not written in the article, because you're not seeing that in the article, that's not what we're going to do. So I will, I will say, I do get a little testy about that, because at some point, you know, and, and what I'm hearing from you, because Wareham, the town, received $350,000 from the Seaport Council grant for the Buzzards Bay Bath, for the Onset Bath House, the same day Barnstable County received the $300,000 for a ship, a fire rescue ship. So saying this is all going towards dredging is not accurate. So I would, you know, I'm just getting, and I understand, you've been very respectful, saying nothing's, Gary, but our folks are doing work, we're applying for grants, we're getting them. So I will say, I'm getting a little peeved.
Well, I, I think, to be honest, that I think you need to blow your own horn and tell other people what you're doing, because otherwise, the assumption is every time I pick up the newspaper and I see something else getting it, I sit there and there's a big question in my mind, what is going on? And if, if you've got all these things going, it needs to be more transparent. It's just like this publicity I'm talking about. You need to get the word out to the taxpayers. They're the people who vote the money, and they're the people who want the best things, like I do, and you do, the best things for this town. I think we're, we need to know a little more of what's going on, because I don't know what you're doing all the time, and I, and it's not fair.
Let's stick with the article and not get off onto the table.
I think you're getting your publicity tonight. I see the media furiously pecking away, so. I think it's working out for everybody. A robust discussion.
All right, thank you, Don.
Okay.
All right, anybody have any questions, Don? All right, so what's your pleasure here?
You know, again, I, I think, to the extent that Don has concerns, they could be covered at town meeting, in the motion. So I would vote at this point not to recommend, not because I don't think it's a good idea, but because I don't think we can really vote to recommend two articles doing the same thing.
Okay. I'm going to read Alan's, too, yeah. Let me read Alan's, hold on a second. I will vote not to recommend this article, ask for marine consultants to produce a pathway for dredging. Article 8 includes the same project, but uses a consultant with a strong track history. Our Director of Natural Resources has a proven track record, successful projects, and understands what actually can happen, rather than a dream. So Alan votes not to recommend as well. So I have a motion from Peter not to recommend. Do I have a second? So I have a second from Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's 400. You know, since we already have it in one article, we should just leave it in the one article, and any of these little things you can catch up to, and you should, you should do that, Don, and get caught up to it, so that we can, you know, deal with whatever the simple things are that, that matter.
And if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree that it's good to go for grants. I, I want tax relief, you know, for folks. I have no problem still going forward, whether this passes or not, or for Seaport Council, and I think, you know, if one of the main goals is bringing this, this issue forward, it's, he's done it.
Well, you've been trying to get one for the pier, too, as well, right?
The next step is we, that pier, you know, that's, the Seaport Council gives, gives usually larger ones.
Right.
I don't, hey, if they, if they want to give us 10K, that's, I'm not going to sneeze or turn it down. It is a pretty substantial application, but, you know, the pier is about a four-plus-million-dollar project, so.
Okay, the last one is the new housing units at Agawam Village. Is the petitioner here? Come on down, please, sir. Come down and speak right into the microphone.
Good evening.
Give us the whole, the whole story, if you would.
My name's Bob Powerlatus, I'm chairman of the Housing Authority. I'm here because my name's on the first line with a star next to it.
The spotlight shines on you.
Spotlight shines on you.
So anyway, first, I'd like to thank the board, the elected officials, and the FinCom and the other appointed department heads in the town. For the past seven or eight years, we've been able to invest almost $3.2 million into the Housing Authority. $2 million of that came from DHCD, $100,000 came from MART, because of Susan Williams-Gifford and Senator Pacheco. $200,000 came from our own, our own funds, which, which we depleted our reserves, because if you know the condition of the Housing Authority six or seven years ago, it was deplorable and in the state of disrepair. We also got funds from the town, from CPC, CDPG, and CEDA. So we're thankful for that over the years. Tomorrow, I'd like to invite the board and members of Community Preservation Fund with $70,000 we got a few years ago from the CPC. We renovated, restored a, the old office, which was once a unit, which should never have been a, an office, back to a, we're putting it back in circulation as a unit. So we'll have an additional housing, affordable housing for eligible residents of Wareham, starting the beginning of next month, and we did that with CPC funds. The Commonwealth's not in the business of building housing anymore. They're in the business of trying to maintain it and help us restore it. And as you can see, the condition at Agawam and in Redwood, it's taken years to get where we are. Small housing authorities such as ourselves get what's left. Boston, Springfield, Worcester, Cambridge, Brookline, you name it, they get the bulk of the funds. So we're happy to be able to work, and we look forward to working with the CPC to restore and build additional units, even though it's only four to six units. Now, these units being funded totally and exclusively by CPC funds would have to be separate and distinct and, and self-sufficient in the unit, total unit costs to operate those would be the, would be the rent. And our costs would include, I'll read what the costs would include. All indirect overhead administrative costs, pro-rata share of sewer water insurance, fringe benefits, health, retirement, provisions for reserves for extraordinary repairs, renovations, replacement, and even an additional $250 per unit of pilots that come to the town per unit each year. We can do that here, we can't do it on the elderly. That's why we need to keep this as a separate and distinct set of accounts. So, pretty much, that's what we want to do. We want to, we would like to embed that somehow into the, and stipulate that in the article, because we want the people to know what we intend to do, and we would expect if you're going to give us $600,000 to $800,000, you would not want us, want to leave us to our own devices. We want to know what you're, we're going to charge and how much, and that it would be self-sufficient, and, and also, what's the, what's the other word? Local preference. We want to have local preference, which we do now, but we want to put that in writing and cast it in stone, so we don't have any problems with people coming in and telling us we can't, and telling us how we must calculate the rents differently, because that's the way the other units are calculated. So that's, that's pretty much the, in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay, I want to just read Alan's thing first, okay? Alan says, I will vote to recommend. That said, I have several issues. First, conditions the proponent want to include may not be possible due to the use of public funds. Certain signees of this petition may run a, may have run afoul of state ethics rules. My other concern is that this article was a runaround for the board of selectmen, possibly not putting the CPC article on the warrant. That's what he has to say. Go ahead, Peter, you're next.
Yeah, there are a lot of problems with the article. First off, Bob, you and I had talked about, you know, the scope of the article, how many units, you know, you were seeking, and, you know, at, at some point, I thought the understanding was that you would seek what was in the Housing Reserve Fund.
Right.
And not go for the initial $330,000.
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. I understand you didn't actually write this article, which, you know, I suppose is neither here nor there, but what I see here today is an article that asks for more money than you actually are looking for. I see an article that doesn't contain some of the restrictive language that you would seek, and I will say, I think that that could be problematic for you, to try to get such language in there, whether it would be by way of a motion at town meeting, which might possibly put your article afoul of what we call the definition of scope, which is, okay, the people were told something was going to happen at town meeting, but did we tell them enough that you could do what you wanted to do to amend the article? Not amend the article, but make a motion that would include the restrictive language you're looking for. I think you've got a real problem there. So I don't think this fall town meeting would be able to give you this, that you seek. You've also talked, I know you and I have talked about a payment in lieu of taxes, but that's something else that would need to be a town meeting arrangement as well, an authorization for that. You know, I did, I'm not going to get too far into it, but I did speak, you know, with Attorney Bowen today, you know, particularly with regard to the, the ethical issues. You know, you've got a member of your board who's also a member of the CPC, and simply by signing this, she puts herself in some peril here. My suggestion to you would be to, given all the flaws here, rather than rush to get this thing approved, I would suggest that you stand up at town meeting and seek to pass over the article, so that everybody can get together in the spring, you know, not, not play these runaround games and try to do this thing the right way. I think it would be more helpful to you going forward, and I think that people would be more inclined to support it if they saw everybody pulling together to make it work for you.
Yes, certainly, there was no intention to upset the apple cart. We, we, we thought that was the amount of money that was available. If, if the $650 is, is more palatable, we'd be happy to do four units, two duplexes for $650. And I'm sure there was no intent on the part of the board member to...
No, and I, and I understand that. No, and I understand that.
With the ethics laws.
But I almost, I almost feel like in order to protect the board member, you know, we need to kill this as soon as it can be killed, which can't be before town meeting, you see, because we've already put it on the warrant. So it has to go through the little thing that Marianne Silva spins. The ball has to come down, and then at that point, and only then can any action be taken with the article. So it survives until then regardless.
Yeah.
But my, my strong recommendation to you would be to stand up at town meeting and ask the body to pass over it, so we can get this damn thing done right in the spring. Stop playing games with it.
Yeah, I'd rather not jeopardize the article at town meeting and have it fail. I think if we can work this into the article clearly and acceptable, and all parties are in agreement, FinCom, Selectmen, and ourselves, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, Tony, anything?
No.
Mary?
I just can't support this, because it's just...
Pardon me?
I can't support this, just because it's, there's just so many problems with this as it stands right now, so.
Well, for myself, I think it's been hanging around a long time, this article, to get, to sort of get something done. And I'm, I was, I'm perfectly willing to support it and give him a shot to fix it. See if they can work it out with the moderator and see what can happen. Maybe that's what he can do. I mean, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. You know, look, town meeting's going to make the ultimate call on this thing anyway. And, you know, just because, if you get there and you can't get a solution, then you can always pass it over.
Yeah, right. I mean, we'd be happy to...
But I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, to me, the concerns run deeper than the language in the article. It's the who of the article is a serious problem.
Just because I don't look at it now doesn't mean that I won't, if it gets cleaned up.
Exactly.
You know, right now, I'm saying no, but it doesn't mean at town meeting, if this is, if this is all tight and...
Would be happy to provide the moderator with the, with the language we would like to see, and if it's not within the scope, then so be it, as Peter said, you know, at town council.
That's what you have to do. And then you'll have to see what happens at town meeting. And you could ultimately get a vote, and maybe it doesn't work. Well, so then they'll say, well, that's, it wasn't, there was something wrong with the vote, or whatever, but that's okay. You can bring it back in April then and get it fixed, whatever the differences are. And then you could put it on, you know, if they, if this was on and we would put this on?
Yeah.
If we were going to put this on and not you guys?
It wouldn't be this.
Then we could deal with this.
Yeah, right.
This could have been dealt with.
Yeah.
So it's unfortunate that they decided to do this. This is what happens when boards or people take it into themselves to try to end around the process. Unfortunately, the process is there for a reason.
Right.
It's important that the process be, gone through with deliberation, in order to make sure that these things get done properly.
Right.
And this is kind of like, just not a good thing, you know? And it's not just you, it's happened to others. It's happened to others as well. So I want you to understand that.
I would agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just from my perspective, I would prefer not to have the AG looking over this article with the signatures, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't either. You know, we're trying to protect people here, not blow them up.
Oh, is it that, is that big an issue?
It's already an issue.
It's already an issue, and I don't want it to mushroom. So that, that was my, my clear recommendation to...
I don't know why it was done this way. It's, I would, that would be my professional opinion on it.
Is it the opinion of council as well? Can council weigh in on this? Is it your opinion that there has been an issue? That could become an issue?
I thought I was going to slip away into the night.
No, oh, no. I saw you hiding over there. You were trying to be quiet, and I...
I already took his name, I took his name in vain when I was speaking already, anyway, so.
Lying under the table.
I need a bigger table. But you've got, you're looking at two different sets of issues. One is these language issues that Bob was talking about and conditions and scope of the article.
Right.
You know, until I actually saw what these changes were going to be, until Madam Moderator chose to ask me whether I had an opinion on scope, I couldn't tell you whether they, at least in my opinion, would be in or out. And ultimately, it's Madam Moderator's call, not mine.
Right.
So that's one set of issues. You know, that, that's kind of like every other article we ever get at town meeting.
That's why I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, so whatever it's going to be, it's going to be. This other business of people on two bodies voting, people, I'll just call it the conflicts issue, that's, you know, unlike fine wine, that's not something that's going to improve with age. In fact, it's, it only has the possibility of worsening the longer it goes.
Yeah.
So, look, no, I don't have a badge on my lapel. I'm not running out and arresting anybody, but I'll just say, of the two groups of issues that you've got out there, yeah, the language stuff, yeah, we can always try to work with that. The other thing, it won't get better.
Okay.
It won't get better, and in addition to conflicts, you know, where you've got sort of a joint action by people on a committee, but not having an open meeting to discuss the joint action, or at least voting to do this in an open meeting, you've also potentially got open meeting law problems. We're trying to save people from themselves here, ultimately.
Can I have a motion then, please?
I move that we not recommend this article.
Okay. Second. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Tony. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's 4-0-0. I'm sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
But, you know, let's, let's plan on getting this done in April, though, okay?
Right, perfect.
Yeah, you're still going to have...
Once and for all, let's get it done.
But the thing is, is only you can move to kill it.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose any of us could, but you, you, you're the lead petitioner. It would be helpful at town meeting if you stood up and said, "Folks, we want to come back in six months. This is what we're looking to do." Madam Moderator will maybe give you some leeway to explain what it is you would like to do, and why you would like to pull the article at the present time. And then that way, you can start your politicking early.
Exactly. I wouldn't want the article to pass as it is now myself, because I want those restrictions in there. The good news is, you'll be able to get help from the folks next time.
Right, if it's submitted as a regular community preservation article.
As a regular article. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it's a political question as to the actual mechanism you want to use at town meeting. You know, I move to approve, I move to defeat. Whatever you're going to do is a political decision, not my place to comment on. But if the decision is to propose a motion that, I don't want to say defeat, but, you know, refer, you know, further study, something like that.
Pass over.
I know sometimes people get cute, saying, yeah, you know, in the legislature, they used to refer things to the Committee on Counties, which was the way to make sure that it never got heard from again.
You pass it.
But if you, but if you moved to refer for further study, you know, that, that's not a negative action. It suggests that...
More work needs to be done.
More work needs to be done, rather than this is a bad idea.
It's a good idea.
So, that's...
That's a really good idea. It's a good idea, it's about clarification.
Then you'll have to decide who's going to study it, too, Don.
If you put together a committee.
It's already done. It's already done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, next up, Town Administrator's Report, please.
What, what?
I just have a question, okay? And it has nothing to do, it has to do with...
It's not really a public hearing, but...
No, no, this, it's before you close that portion of it.
All right, quickly.
What you're voting for tonight is to not put it on the warrant or not put it on the warrant.
No, we voted the warrant is...
The warrant is...
The warrant is closed, it's done, it's published, it's on the schoolhouse doors and all that stuff. We're voting our, we're voting our recommendations to town meeting.
Right, so it's favorable, it's...
Yeah, we either like it or we don't.
Thank you, thank you.
You're going to have your...
Week I was uninformed, and I'm just trying to...
No, that's okay. There might be somebody out there who didn't understand either, so you might have done that, Mr. Service.
You have your two bits of publicity. Gary's article and your...
All right, come on, let's move on. Town Administrator's Report, please.
Mr. Chairman, today I was in wet and wild weather in Milford at the Building Inspections Office up there. I am happy to announce that they did give relief for the Buzzards Bay Onset Bath House to build greater than 50% in the flood zone. So that did pass, which was, which was really great. I got to tell you, I was impressed with our building commissioner, but not just that. Their board afterwards came up and came out of their, went out of their way to, to really tell us how good of a building commissioner we have. So it was pretty, pretty impressive, so.
And you said, "We know."
I said, "Don't tell them." So...
All right.
And then the rest of that's what we've been going over, getting ready for, for some of the articles and such, so.
Okay. All right, next up, Liaison Reports, please. Tony?
Nothing.
Mary? Peter?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so I went to the school building meeting the other night, and they're moving along pretty well. They're, they're still trying to refine some of the, the structure of the building, and they've kind of created sort of smaller units, because it's rather a large building. I don't know if anybody realizes that. It's actually a relatively large building. So it's trying to make it so that this, you know, fourth grader, third grader, second grader walks up to the building, it isn't sort of overwhelmed by its structure. So they, they've come up with some ideas to make these smaller little, little designs into the, the building and stuff, to kind of make it a little more friendly for somebody like that, you know? I don't know about you, but when I was a kid, you know, I lived in a certain area, and I went back there one time, many years later, and I drove around, I said, "Boy, is this place small? Whatever happened to this place?" You know, like, as if it shrunk. But it's the nature of the beast, you know? We're little, so everything seems so much bigger to us, so much grand. And they're trying to, try to help some of that, to try to make it a little more comfortable for some of the kids. I mean, you don't think about those things, but, you know, we don't use the building, the kids do, you know? So you got to kind of design it for that. Other than that, they're moving along, the timeline seems to be moving along fine. They have a lot of different events coming up. I wish everybody would go to the website and look at and try to visit one of them, so that you can get actual information. No more coffee shop information, please. Do not sit in the coffee shop and listen to somebody who sat down next to you and rattle off this whole big spew of stuff that's probably not true.
Fake news.
All right? Ask the questions of the people who know, please. I mean, if you go there and you make an informed decision and you vote it down, that's fair. But if you go there and you listen to the guy who sat in the coffee shop next to you, or some guy that you met on the street who told you, "Did you know such and such and so and so?", right? And it ain't true, and you make a decision, then what's that say about us? Okay? We need to make a decision that's an informed decision, so we know exactly what we're doing when we get there. We can say, "Yep, I know why we're doing this, I know whatever, but I don't want it, so I'm going to vote against it." That's okay, it's an informed decision. But to have somebody tell you something, like recently, two people asked me. They said, "Oh, well, how come they haven't done anything to say what it would cost to rehab the buildings?" Well, they did. And a matter of fact, it's a requirement of the SBA that you do that. And it's a big exercise you have to go through, and you have to prove to them that the new